I don't think it's yours. I think it's from a meeting earlier.
Thursday, November 6th, school board meeting. And I'm happy to have everyone here tonight and we'll begin by introducing board members. My line.
Jeff Handley.
Mary Manning.
Joanne O'Brien.
Pete Merrill.
Dan Coats.
Becky Bless.
Tony P.
Linda Caputo.
Ella Crook.
Megan Carlson.
Janelle McKinnon.
Michelle Tucker.
Administrative staff.
Katie Quilt, superintendent.
Andrea Dish, business manager.
Terry McGuire, director of technology.
Sarah Bolden-Gagnasiak, director of special services.
Sarah Sims, principal at Gardner Regional Middle School.
Christina Levine, principal at LA, Laura E. Richards School.
Beth Solay, principal at Princeton Randolph and Saldivia School.
Sheree Poole, principal over at Howard Thompson.
Lauren Arnold, principal at Gardner Area High School.
Vicky Dugan, principal at the Review Community School.
Angela Hardy, director of curriculum.
Is that everyone?
That's everyone who's here.
It feels like there should be more. Okay, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the tribe of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. All right. A public comment period script. We're about to convene into the public comment period of our meeting. State law in Maine requires a public comment item on agendas of a full meeting of the school board. Please note that the public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the board to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. I also want to point out that under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel, particular student matters, any rumors presented as fact that compromise the privacy of others, any health or medical information protected as confidential. On any matter of concern, we would ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. We ask that speakers please address comments to the board directly rather than to the audience. Speakers may address items pertinent to tonight's meeting agenda or any topic related to the school unit's programs, policies, or operations. In the unlikely event the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and return once order has been restored. Finally, I want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you so choose. And we have a board pamphlet that references policies. And I forgot to say, Dan, welcome. And I'd like to give you an opportunity to tell us a little bit about you, what you want us to know.
Well, I'm Dan Coats. I've lived in Randolph my whole life. Worked for my family business for 10 years. Got done and I worked for McGee. Got four kids, two graduated, two, one in school, one's in kindergarten. I've been a bit awkward.
Thank you. It's never ending, a kindergartner. Well, welcome. Glad you're here. Uh, let's see. Prioritization of items and alteration of the established agenda format sequence as needed. Public comment. He did. Uh, do we have a sheet?
Sheet.
There's a sheet.
Thank you, Janelle. I think usually we tell people to go ahead and sign in, but we got a little lost. Monkey doke. Number one, Quincy Merrill.
Hi, my name is.
Wait, one second. We need a two-minute timekeeper. Thank you, Janelle. Do you volunteer to be it from now on?
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Quincy Merrill. I am a sixth grader in the Gardner Regional High School. And I have started doing the drum club. I would like to take this time to thank the non-binary people drum club because they are comfortable taking male and female roles and we have Patty Shorter give male roles in the drum club.
Thank you, Quincy. Jennifer Richardson.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Richardson. I'm from Gardner. And I'd like to talk about statements and proof of the information of those statements. If a member of our school board makes a statement in a public setting, I would hope that the statement could be defended with data and sources. Recently, a school board member made a statement on a publicly used site that claimed that the reduction in reading and test scores are the result of a liberal agenda in schools. I asked for the data. That is a statement that could and should, if you are an elected member of the community, be backed by data and sources the data came from. Organizations have identified liberal and conservative states, counties, towns, and even neighborhoods within towns. Academic testing results can be obtained by state, county, town, and neighborhood. This school board member should be able to compare the political maps to the test scores and determine which states, counties, towns, and neighborhoods are lagging in reading and test scores and see how they coincide with the political leanings of that area. If what she said was true, the data should show liberal leaning areas to be behind in reading and test scores. I look forward to her post with the breakdown, analysis, data points, and references used to complete the research. Please don't make sweeping judgmental statements unless you can defend them with data. We have seen far too many litter box posts. And I don't think it's helpful for our town at all to make disparaging comments. And I have to say that maybe looking at the increase in technology and cell phones and iPads over 20 years may have more than impact on how kids are learning.
Thank you. Brittany.
Sally Giroux.
I apparently am not public. I don't know what.
Currently what?
I don't, I don't know if I'm supposed to be public comment.
Oh, not yet. You're on the wrong place. You're on the agenda.
Yeah.
All right then. Public comment is over. Well done. Prioritization of items and alteration to the established agenda format sequence as needed. Motion to approve.
I just want to make sure that you all notice item J in new business.
What do I do?
That item. And bring that to finance. Okay.
Okay. Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Okay, thanks. Um, approval of minutes of previous meetings, regular school board meeting, October 2nd, 2025.
Yeah, so.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Excellent. Motion carries. All right. We've already jumped the gun and welcomed you, Dan, but welcome again.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Tracy. I'd like to thank Alyssa and I do have a gift for her that we'll present perhaps at next month when she's able, if and when she's able to be here. Uh, we attended the fall conference together and we entered a, a drawing, a raffle. And, um, one of the raffle items was a, um, police blanket, one of those knotted blankets, um, that has breast cancer, the ribbons, um, all over it. And Alyssa is a newly cancer-free breast cancer patient. So the agreement she and I made was, um, if she won the blanket, that she could keep the blanket. And if I won the blanket, I would give her the blanket and I won the blanket. So Alyssa gets to have the blanket and I'm just so happy that she's healthy and well and that she was part of our board for, um, two terms and, and time goes on and Dan, we're really happy that you enjoy this and, and we don't have to buy you any, win prizes for any blankets.
I'm good on the blankets.
We'll take that. Okay. Recognitions and celebrations? Just as written?
Yeah, you all had in your packet the, um, email of thanks and recognition from the Department of Ed, School Nutrition Team. They came and had lunch on apple crunch day. And so, um, they wrote a sincere thank you and a shout out to the food service staff here in MSAD 11.
Great.
Yeah.
Excellent. Correspondence? As written? As written. Committee reports.
Capital area tech.
Okay. We have a couple, several points to talk about. At CATC, the capacity for this year is at 66%. That's not, that's a little lower than it has been, 66%. There are 500 seats available in, I think, 18 different cla- 18 different classes. Um, one thing that I found very interesting, um, well, first of all, to go to CATC, you put in an application, you interview, you job shadow, you meet the teacher. It's a process. You just don't sign up and then you go. And on the three classes that have new teachers, the attendance is in the dumpsters.
Oh, wow.
And I think what that proves is how important the teacher is.
Yeah.
Is having that connection to the teacher that you're going to be spending a lot of time with.
Right.
So I found that very interesting. They were confident that once his or her reputations became known, that the enrollment would go up.
For the subjects.
Of the new classes.
Yeah.
The three.
That had low enrollment.
The three new classes are machine tool, the business academy, and firefighting.
But those aren't new classes, right?
No, but they are new instructors. They're not a known commodity.
Yeah.
Yeah. Unfortunately, Gardner's participation in the program is not increasing. And I know many of us are very concerned about that and I sort of made it my personal goal to see if I can invest time and, and help wherever possible because I think this is a great place with great opportunities for our kids and I'd like to see more coming. Uh, the second item is LD 436. And that's where principals, um, met so that these students could get credits for high school because sometimes they have difficulty getting all their credits in. So for instance, if you're in carpentry, you can get perhaps five, a half unit credit for math. If you're in the police academy, you can get one, um, credit for physical, um, activity. And, um, that's in the process of being approved. I don't think it's actually approved yet. And the final thing we talked about was funding. At this point, when our students go to CATC, there is no additional charge. The state picks it all up. And I know when I was on the board four or five years ago, they thought that that would not be the case in just a couple of years. But we're still not charged anything additional for any student that goes. And they think that will be true for at least the next two years. And so that's, that's good news too. And the last thing is really important. Get your calendars out. The open house is January 22nd. If you have any interest at all in a technical school, I encourage you to go and check it out. It is really exceptional. And maybe I'm not supposed to say this, they feed you because the, um, the culinary.
They do feed you.
The culinary school will feed you, so. Check it out. January 22nd.
January 22nd.
And I don't know the time. I think it's like four to seven, but I, we, I have time to get back on that.
In the past, we've gone as a board to the open house. Um, and that could be a fun thing to maybe schedule and go together. Is Gabe still there?
No, I think he left.
Maybe we could take a bus.
Perking is tight because it's a very popular event.
It's a very popular event and there's so much, I'm kind of surprised about Tool and Die because it's such a really machine tool. That's just a really.
But the teachers are unknown.
Right. It's about the teacher.
And you know, it just, I think it shows how important a teacher is to a student.
Connection. Absolutely. Yeah.
Would you be okay reading off like the courses that are available?
The 18 courses?
Yeah.
Sure.
I know.
Auto collision, auto tech, auto tech two, building construction, computer aided drafting, pre-nursing, medical vet terminology, computer technology, culinary arts, early education, early childhood education, graphic design and visual arts, law enforcement, plumbing and heating, machine tool, electrical technology, business academy, firefighting, and EMT.
Thanks, yeah. Great.
And there are a couple of classes up for consideration. I don't know how to say it. Driving big trucks, CDL licenses.
Driving big trucks.
So that's one. It's very expensive to get started, um, but that's one that I think is being seriously considered.
Nice. Because our bus drivers have to take one. Well, again, a CDL license when they.
And I think that someone without licenses is in high demand, as are many of these.
Yeah. I love it. Thank you.
You're gonna have a new acronym now? Do I need that for?
Sorry.
Yeah, the BBT program.
Well, we could raise that from the record and pretend I didn't say it. You all knew what I meant.
Honestly.
Excellent. Curriculum committee, so we, um, Linda has, um, agreed to be the new chair of the curriculum committee, but she's not prepared.
Well, I'll start it if Angela wants to fill in.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. At the curriculum committee, we looked at the credits for the technical school. We looked them over. We talked about what they meant. Um, we discussed our concerns if any, and we've, and Michelle, you can chime in, please.
Okay.
And, um, we talked about it. I think that we were in, all in favor of it. We thought it, it was a great move.
Absolutely.
And then we talked about fall assessments results. And I'm so embarrassed to say I don't remember any specifics because I wasn't expecting to report, but they were in general very much uphill, I think.
Yeah, they're, they were stable from spring to fall, which was good. There was some rise. And then there's also, we discussed a little bit of the challenge that in, um, our math and reading assessment, they changed.
Oh, right.
They changed the norm study. So it's a nationally normed test. So all the students all over the nation in public and public charter schools who take the assessment are in this like group. And they sort of orient them on a bell curve. And then they set like, to be proficient, you meet 61st percentile and they set a number for that. A writ, it's called a writ number. Well, every five years, they, they, um, revisit that pool of students because across five years, big things happen. Students generally change, you know, hopefully collectively all go up in their scores, but we had COVID in the last five years. And so, um, generally, scores went down. So proficiency rates, uh, it's easier to get a proficiency rate now, uh, but only by a little bit. Um, so some of the rise was because of the new norm study and we went into quite a bit of detail about it on our video. So if you really want to dig into those details and be able to have a conversation about it, feel free to start with the video. Takes about an hour. And, um, we, we can talk about it. And there is one jump and it's in 10th grade, so that's exciting. We're not sure if it's, uh, I think it's a combination of students, um, being more and more prepared and a little bit of a jump because of the pool change. Going over that.
So with that, just to kind of make it, maybe break it down into a little bit plainer English because I had to ask those questions. So one of the questions that I asked about the norms, like the, you know, the average score is, is it set by the test or is it set by the district or set by the DOE? It's actually not a set number that kids have to achieve. It's an aggregate of what kids are currently achieving. And so COVID definitely had a huge impact on that. And it's a number that changes every five years. So at first, to me, it looked like, oh my gosh, the kids are going downhill. But, uh, you know, that we're lower, that we're lowering our expectations. But that wasn't the case at all. It was that, given this collective educational trauma of COVID, of kids not learning the same way as before COVID, there's, there's varying levels of children who kept up or had to catch up. So it lowered proficiency temporarily, but it has no real bearing on going forward because schools have been so dedicated to trying to recover from COVID and implement new techniques and curriculums and things like that. So that was really encouraging. So I, I definitely want to encourage any of you that look at those numbers to say, wait a minute, this is, we're in recovery. We're in rebuilding. We are not in devastation. So that's something I, I had to really ask a lot of questions about. Um, I also would like to follow up on what you said, um, about the, the CATV. Um, something that was really interesting to me was, besides the big trucks. But something that was really interesting to me, um, that I didn't know before is that students that do take the, um, integrated credits, they're able to fulfill their graduation requirements, um, at CATC. So for instance, um, an English credit may be fulfilled by, um, early childhood education. So some of the, um, academics can be fulfilled with these life skill vocational trainings. And I thought that was fabulous that not only are students learning a skill like CNA or, you know, culinary arts, but they're also fulfilling the, the way that those programs are written also fulfill the core academics. And so I am so encouraged to learn more about that and I would definitely like to go to their open house. So thank you very much.
Can I just add it? So, um, that's absolutely right. And we prioritize our in-house classes as much as we can. And then if students are finding that in order to go to CATC, there are barriers to them reaching graduation, then we access that integrated credit option so that we don't create an inadvertent barrier to, to achieve, to securing those skills, um, that experience. Um, so that's kind of a conversation that ends up happening with the school counselor and the student to work through that. Um, and this is a result of all of the sending principles so that the eight, I think, eight sending principals working collaboratively to come to shared agreements. So if you're from Erskine or you're from Coney or you're from Gardner, you're, you are accessing those integrated credits for the same purpose. It's not different per sending school. Those principals came to that agreement. So I think that's really important. It, it makes it a little easier, um, regionally. Thank you. That was a real collaborative effort.
I love it. Dropout prevention.
Yeah, so we just had our first meeting of the year because September is always a little crazy getting everything going. Um, so we actually put out, um, a big email out to staff to say, hey, we need you. Come join us. This is important work. Um, we had a beautiful response. We had about 13 people sign up to be part of the committee, um, including a community member. Um, so just really excited about that. Our first meeting, only three people were able to come, so it was a very small group. But we reviewed work we've done over the last two years and talked about our goal of moving forward, which is to sort of rewrite the dropout prevention plan that we have to have based off of the policy. Um, and it really integrate that work, update it, um, and kind of change out some of the things that we've done pockets of over the last couple of years and really kind of put it all together in one big thing to present to the policy committee. Um, kind of, so that's our work for this year. So excited about that to see a whole bunch of different layers kind of come together into one final document to present.
Any questions? Thank you. No finance committee meeting, and policy committee next.
Sure. Thanks so much. So, uh, we met, uh, let's see, so on October 2nd, right before the full board meeting. It's, uh, how we usually do this. Uh, we went through, um, a number of policies. Uh, you can see in the minutes, actually, we, um, had one that we, um, kind of put aside for follow-up and, and had that conversation tonight, um, to talk with Gabe about, um, uh, temperature standards for schools, which is a, a new, uh, statute, main statute, uh, that all school districts will have these standards, uh, for their schools. In the discussion tonight, and I'll probably say it again next month, we learned, actually, we're doing a lot of these. The, uh, the policy itself just sort of, uh, you know, codifies what we're already doing, um, but sets a standard. So, um, we do have, uh, several, uh, several policies coming forward for, uh, first reading here. And what I'd like to do is make a motion, uh, to accept those, uh, as a bundle. Um, it does cover, uh, school board use of electronics. These are all included in board members packets. Uh, it goes over, uh, an update for, uh, executive session, uh, procedures, notification of board meetings, uh, the process for our policy for agenda preparation, um, uh, what it means to, uh, um, have an abstention, so voting but in abstention, uh, then how minutes are tracked, board relations with media, and then, uh, broadcasting, taping recordings of board meetings. So, yeah, I'd like to, uh, advance those for, um, I'll make a motion for a first reading for that bundle.
Awesome, Dan. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Great. And then we do have another set, uh, coming forward for the second reading. Uh, and these have been reviewed on our, uh, five-year cycle and just bringing them back forward. Uh, board member qualifications, uh, board member code of ethics, board officers, and board superintendent relations. And I'd like to advance those as a bundle, so make a motion to advance those for second reading. Uh, board member code of ethics, board officers and board superintendent relations. And I'd like to advance those as a bundle. So make a motion to advance those for second reading.
Second. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Motion carries. Um, let's see. Oh, school-based health center. Um, they had a meeting. Molly is out of town. Did everyone get a copy of this in their folders? Okay. Um, Molly has presented a report. Um, so I hope you'll read it.
Would you copy one?
Is it in our emails?
It's in the email.
Okay.
I have.
I have it in print. It looks like this.
Yeah.
I have it. Oh, okay. Sure. Well, it's in your board. It should be in the board packet. You're wrong. I don't think that anyone wants a copy. We could do that. Anyone want to intermediate?
Would anyone like to copy? Yes, please.
Thanks, Angela.
Yeah, on the email from. Yeah. The, the, um, the agenda.
The original.
The original agenda has the, all the information, not the revised one. So I'm looking through it and I'm just not, I'm just not off to the end yet.
Does everyone on the board want a copy? I guess go ahead and make ten.
Thank you.
Tony and I.
That's no problem.
Student rep report.
Oh, yeah.
Um. We did it the longest one today.
That's awesome.
Sadly, Kira couldn't join us tonight because she was working hair and makeup for the play tonight, Thursday and Friday. So go check that out. It's gonna be really good. It's wonderful life. Starting off, we have sports updates. Volleyball won the regional championships and they were classy runner-up for state. Jack Quinn was tied for first in New England's high school golf championship. Playoffs hosted this Friday for football against Wells. Um, and winter sports parent meeting is on November thirteenth at six P M. For club updates, NHS induction went really well. Um, they're now preparing their Thanksgiving baskets and collecting donations from homerooms and that. Um, on November sixteenth, NHS is hosting a community supper at Christ Church and they invite you all to join. Um, Latin convention is next week where we do funds of, tons of fun games and stuff. Um, uh, the high school sign, uh, the high school students signed up for their AP tests and paid their AP money. Sort of the strength day is coming up and for Fall Fest, we had a blast. Um, the student council did great despite the raining weather. Making us go inside, but we had a really great time playing pumpkins and having fun games. Um, the French versus Latin versus Spanish soccer game, it's a recreational game for clubs, is coming on tomorrow. Um, at the Boys and Girls Club, we're in like Littlefield. It's about fifteen minutes per half. So it's about thirty minutes and we're really athletic. Yesterday, we had the math meet at the high school and it was really, really popular. We scored four. It was out of seven, but we scored four. Um, and then from the conference, I brought this. I got this amazing display from Imagine Learning. It's, I wrote a blurb on it. Um, I stumbled upon this incredible program that was really well thought out for students and teachers alike. The lovely woman working there said I was welcome to take the display as she didn't want to fly it back to Virginia.
Yeah, she was so nice.
It comes with um, individual workbooks for students. Um, they'd have to be copied for everyone. They have um, multiplication games. Learning blocks, lower level reading books that are like designed for kindergartners and like first graders. And it comes with teacher books. Each of the teacher books is equipped with like um. Thought out, like ask students these questions. It's really direct and like um, really led through. It has pre-made quizzes and um, like tests, tests and stuff. And I'd like to donate it to the Pittston School. For the fourth graders and the other students that are lower levels that could probably also use it. Um, also, Kira and I, I'm sad she's not here to also talk about it, but we met this wonderful woman at U M O. Um, her name's Catherine Biddle and she offered Kira and I this um, incredible opportunity to do quantitative and qualitative research analysis at her research lab at U M O. And so we've met with her and she's going to give us like weekly like um, assignments and we're going to get to put together all of that. And we have the opportunities to present at um, potential conferences or the legislature at some point. And they're working on this thirty-year-long like research piece into superintendence and like workflow. At the conference, we also went to a couple s- uh, the sessions. We talked about playground accessibility in one of them, which we, Kira and I are also hoping to take on as a little side project. We're gonna try and uh, go to the schools and kind of document some of our own um, playgrounds and how we could maybe form them to be more accessible. To students with differently-abled um. Situations going on. Um, and we also went to a couple constitutional sessions that were really informative. Went to one about the First Amendment. We went to another one. And we got these beautiful pamphlets and we really got to think about it and it was really, really eye-opening. We went to both days. So we got full days of. Um, conferences and we learned a lot and we were so happy to be invited. So thank you all for letting us go. It was a great time and that was all. Thank you.
Good job. Nice. I was so excited to see you two. I got to a session late and I sat down and, you know, came in like the cafeteria. And you two were so on fire. You were so energetic. You were so excited. Like, that is the kind of energy that I want to see all the time. That was, you were amazing. So I'm really glad you were there too. I think you influenced everyone around you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it was really eye-opening and like, we're really excited to look into more research opportunities, especially with this Catherine Biddle. She's so, it's. So, it's such a great opportunity. We're so excited about it. So.
That's great.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Administrator reports. Oh, yes. So now that we have the school-based health center report, let's hang on a second with those. Um, let's just take a minute, everyone, and go ahead and um, look at it and. Read through. So if anything on this report um, creates a question for you, Katie, you go to these.
I was there, yeah.
Um, and, and Molly also. So if anyone has questions um, from this report, I would suggest please send them to Katie. And Katie can uh, bring them to the next meeting and, and they can be part of the next report. And the next meeting is in January, as it says, so we can. Just have a, a smooth.
Just a clarification on one item about the IT part two. There's no way they'll, they will be. Able to gain access to the school data on students or anything. They're gonna be totally separate in their internet.
In their internet connection. Yes.
No way they can tie into the, our existing systems and get the, the uh, school. Computer systems.
Yes.
They will have access to that at all.
Right. They will have a separate internet connection.
You have a question? Um. At the October meeting last year, with Health Reach as well as the December school board meeting. There was an emphasis that there would be privacy and separation between the nurse's office and um, the school-based health center. For privacy, HIPAA, FERPA, all the regulations. But this is saying that they're gonna be joined together. Can you address that? That doesn't seem to be kosher with what was explained to us prior.
Yeah, and you'll have a chance to see, the spaces are right next to each other. They are gonna be sharing a bathroom. So there's an entrance. Is that what you mean?
Well, I see, I see the bathroom entrance. I see that, you know, there's gonna be renovations, but I see that um. The two offices are gonna be side by side, kind of joined together. And that doesn't seem to be in line with the privacy that was talked about before, that the nurse's office would be very separate than the health center. So.
Yeah, they're next to each other currently. They'll remain next to each other, but the facility, though, there will be separate entrances to each. And so they will, they will be separated by a wall. Currently, there's a walk-through door and, but they are separate, they will be separate spaces once the renovation is completed. Okay. Any other questions?
One more question. Um, and maybe Gabe can address this. Um, do we have a, is he still here?
No.
Um, I was gonna say, do, was there a ballpark figure in terms of what needed to be raised above and beyond possible grants? Just a general.
No. No, there hasn't been a specific amount yet.
So we're gonna be financially responsible for phase one or that's what Gabe's getting quotes on?
It should be, we should be able to access, Gabe is confident as of this October seventh meeting, that the money that we have available through grant funds. Will cover the renovation. He's not expecting there to be a great expense, expense to this constructing of walls. Um, the electrical and there should be minimal plumbing involved.
We were assured that there wouldn't be any cost to the school district. So what, I see the grant funding is the Center for Tobacco Independence. But what would that have been otherwise used for to support our students?
We, there's specific ways we can and can't use the money. And so we can use that for uh, wellness initiatives internally, you know, within the district. And so that would certainly fit.
How does a wellness initiative for students um, translate into construction? Does, doesn't?
Because the construction is to create a facility to support student wellness.
Again, we were told that we wouldn't have to, that everything would be, all that part would be covered by Health Reach. So that's a little concerning as well.
So I did say, so we don't put you on the spot, that if, if board members have questions, please send them to Katie. And Katie can bring them to the January meeting and uh, or get them to Health Reach before and work with Gabe before. But um, to put you on the spot.
I do apologize for putting you on the spot. I don't, I don't mean to do that. I also believe that there should be complete transparency. So these public meetings that are recorded are also the place we should be asking questions too. But, so thank you very much.
No question. And it's important that my answers are accurate.
Yes.
So I, having a little bit of time to make sure. Because even my response to you, Michelle, saying it's wellness, there are rules about how we can spend that money that we have. I, I just want to be really clear that I. Am saying what I know.
Right.
Is true without oversharing so that I give misinformation.
And there's no harm in coming back and saying, hey, I've miss, I misspoke. So that transparency is really valuable to everyone in the room and the parents that are watching today. So thank you for that.
And the answers to those questions will be in January second. So please send them to Katie. Yeah. We have administrator reports.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be reading for elementary school. So we're starting with L E Rs. Noteworthy, student shout-outs. During the month of October, the staff looked into authentic ways to recognize students for various achievements. And out of that came student shout-out. All staff are encouraged to submit shout-outs that are read each morning during announcements and then sent home with students that afternoon. Walking school bus has come to an end for the fall. We were able to fill, to fit in six amazing Monday mornings with a total of thirty different students and families joining us over the weeks. We had four students who joined us every week. We will bring back the walking school bus when the warm weather is again. R V. The R V staff are aware of recent concerns for families around food insecurity. They're stepping up to help out with our fourth grade team taking the lead. They are organizing a food drive to support the Tiger Food Pantry. And are also hosting a community dinner for our R V families. The dinner will be both the culmination of the food drive and a chance for our R V families to come together and support one another. If you'd like to contribute to the food drive, we'd love your support. Please reach out. H T. Noteworthy, students at Helen Thompson School are getting stronger leadership in promoting a positive school culture. Each month, they will leave community meetings and nominate peers for the Possum Peer Award, which recognizes students who exemplify being safe, respectful, responsible, and kind. These peer-to-peer nominations rather than adult-selected awards are meant to foster genuine student ownership and community pride. Our before-school Lego Club and after-school Play Club continue to thrive with full participation and frequent family involvement. Parent-teacher conferences were highly attended and the parent-teacher group provided a generous sandwich bar for the staff while also organizing the successful book fair. P T G participation remains strong with active engagement from parents and staff. A challenge we have is continuing, um, a continuing challenging, uh, challenge involves ensuring safe and efficient movement. Between the main building of the grade four, five modular. As buildings remain locked for security reasons. Students currently require staff escort with a key to transition between the locations, which can create logistical difficulties during the school day. The administrative team is exploring viable solutions, including issuing additional keys to staff. Or implementing a buzz-in access system similar to that used for office visitors to improve accessibility while maintaining a secure environment. We really want an underground tunnel. P R C S. Over the past month at P R C S, we've had a number of wonderful community engagement opportunities. We welcomed our neighboring fire departments, including those from Randolph and Pittston, who joined us to review and practice fire safety. We also hosted our annual fireman muster where Dr. Relais and a parent volunteer were brave enough to serve as targets for. Hose practice with our enthusiastic fifth-grade students. As part of the artists in the schools program, we were treated to a lively performance by the Tardy Brothers, brought to us by Johnson Hall Opera House. Their show featured juggling, comedy, and consortiumism, captivating both students and staff. Everyone was fully engaged and left inspired, eager to learn more about the skills, tricks, and techniques. Involved in putting together such an entertaining experience. And other exciting news, P R C S collected school bucks from April through May. In two thousand twenty-four, we raised four hundred and sixteen dollars and four cents. This year, thanks to a big push from Miss Dubey, we saw a significant increase, raising a total of two thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars in two thousand twenty-five. We plan to use these funds to purchase adaptive equipment for our playground, making it more inclusive and accessible for all students once we receive the check.
Since March sixth, twelve. So at the middle school, our seventh-grade students recently participated in a field trip called the Seventh, Seventh Up Biz Tour. This field trip is done in collaboration with our local Chamber of Commerce and allows our seventh-grade students to go out into the community. Visit businesses, participate in various events, learn about careers, and get the opportunity to connect with our local businesses and community. This was wildly fun. Um, and the following day, it was shared with us that all of the volunteers who supported the field trip. Um, told the Chamber of Commerce that they were incredibly impressed with this, our students at the middle school. They went on to say that compared to other students they worked with in the area, our students were incredibly polite, respectful, engaged, well-behaved. And it was obvious they were well-supported by staff. Another incredible positive along with the same lines was on our school picture day. When the picture day lady was leaving. She stopped into the office to share that she goes to a lot of schools across Maine and she has never been in a school where. and she had never been in a school where it's so obvious how much we care about students. She shared that she was blown away by the positive interactions they saw between teachers and staff, the way our announcements are done, the smiles, and so many examples. We shared both of these compliments with our staff to emphasize the work that they do is so important and is making a difference and is seen by others. Way to go, GRMS. At the high school, October was a vibrant and rewarding month, filled with a lot of exciting activities and meaningful accomplishments. Our trunk-or-treat event was held on October 26th, and it drew a fantastic turnout of families and community members despite the weather. We proudly celebrated our National Honor Society induction on the 29th. And we closed out the month with our Fall Fest event on the 31st, which was celebrating our designation as a unified champions school with pumpkin carving relay races in a staff versus student soccer game that I still have bruises from. Academically, our fall data was strong. Fifty percent of our grade nine and ten students are proficient in math, and fifty-three percent are proficient in literacy, which reflects a solid growth from last year. Our graduation rate last year reached ninety percent, which is the highest it's been in several years, and our chronic absenteeism rate declined. Overall, October highlighted the positive momentum and hard work happening throughout our school community. And a challenge we have is just an increase in workload created by open positions, and staff have been stretched a little thin, but they're continuing to show dedication and maintaining support for our students and programs. For adult ed, their noteworthy item is we have thirty enrolled students in the high school completion between our two sites. The remote class options continue to be an important support for students from both locations. And a challenge is our enrichment registration portal continues to keep us busy learning. For athletics, the Gardner All Sports Boosters just completed a fundraiser to pay to upgrade the field lights at Hope Field to LEDs. The cost of the upgrade should be approximately fifteen to sixteen thousand. The labor will be donated by a licensed electrician, and the installation will probably take place this spring or summer. And there are some details that still need to be worked out before that time. In addition, all of our fall sports teams at the high school and middle school qualified for postseason play. Our middle school girl soccer team won the Cal championship. And from an administrative standpoint, and what Nate has witnessed on a regular basis this fall, is that school spirit has never been higher in his eight years here as the athletic director. From the start of the fall season, with the addition of the homecoming parade bonfire, all of our athletes and spectators alike have shown tremendous sportsmanship and kindness to opposing teams, officials, and spectators. In addition, this is the most successful in terms of records that our fall sports teams have ever had since he has been here. And we have a playoff game tomorrow night for fall. So we welcome anybody that would like to join.
We have the system directors' information tonight. So for special services, a celebration process at LER. Three of our four special education staff members are new to us this year. And personally, I think elementary school teachers are magical. To get kindergartners in and get them all going in the same direction is amazing. And they really come together as a team, a cohesive and collaborative team to support students. Their responsiveness, thoughtfulness, and genuine care for students are such an asset to our school community. Student-centered approach is making a real difference. And we did a data review in early October, so a little bit ago at this point. And they've already seen a decrease in behaviors and an increase in learning time between the start of the school year. And then that was a celebration for us. Operations, noteworthy. We have filled all of our vacant custodial positions. This is the first time since before COVID that all the positions have been filled. This week, we have the new entry door installed at the superintendent's office. And the new door is in and ready to be installed at LER. Challenge is that at LER, we're still having issues with the glue coming up from underneath the cafeteria floor. We have tried all recommendations, and unfortunately, none have been successful in stopping the problem. At this point, we were looking at scheduling a company to come in and remove the floor and glue. Another challenge is building keys. Over the years, building usage and security have changed. Many staff now move from building to building or to multiple rooms within the same building. This is leading to more staff having master keys. This is leaving us open to potential security issues if a key is lost. We need to look at adding door entry controls at all of our buildings this coming budget year. Transportation, the Bus Drivers Association has been raising funds to purchase turkeys for the National Honor Society Thanksgiving baskets for families in our district. Last year, our drivers donated forty turkeys. We'd like to thank Ainsley's Market for their contribution to our drivers' efforts. In addition to turkeys, our drivers have also purchased winter gear for students in years past. For nutrition, we had our first annual Maine Apple Crunch Day on October 15th. Our apples were purchased from Bailey's Orchard in Whitefield. During our lunches, everyone took a crunch out of their apples at the same time during a three-two-one crunch announcement. It sounds so cute. We had apple balloons, apple napkins, and signs in all the schools that participated. The students and the staff had a great time. We also had a couple of child nutrition staff in the Department of Education come have lunch with us and participate. For curriculum, on October 28th, one of our school's social workers, Lisa Munsing, presented with Angela Hardy at the United Ways Impact 2032 Summit in Augusta on the work we've done with Lynn Lyons to shift our approach to supporting students with anxiety. Participants from area districts and education-related nonprofits are engaged and curious, seeking out additional information after the session.
Those were great. Okay, new hires, general information. Nominee? Yes.
Okay, what is Falcon Night Flight Coordinator?
All right, is that on me? So Falcon Night Flight is an event that's been going on for, way before I was even here. But it is literally a lock-in event. It is for sixth and seventh graders. They come and they spend the night in the school for a night of fun and frivolity. When I think of Falcon Night Flight, one, I think of how tired I am because I'm way too old to be staying up all night long. But I also think of the amount of joy. There are, we turn the gym into like this land of giant inflatables. We have a room full of like pinball machines and other games. There's a movie room, there's a dance all night long, there's food that gets, it's insane. And it is so much fun. It is a lot, the staff come all night long. A lot of our community members donate so that it happens. It does take quite a bit to put it on, as you can imagine. But it is just, it's incredible. You get to connect with the kids, they get to connect in different ways to the school. And so we're already getting kids, what, when is it? When is it? It's typically in March because it takes all day to get it set up. And we usually do like a parent evening with parents, and we do some training, and we try to give them some information about it. But yeah, when they're passed out in the morning, all in the cafeteria with cookie crumbs, and their parents are picking them up, they're like, this is the best thing that's ever happened to me. So it's completely this amazing event. It has been run in the past by our STEM teacher, Mr. Anderson, and he is taking a step back this year for some personal reasons. And so that is why you see Mr. Denny. He is stepping up to ensure that this amazing event continues.
Thank you. That was great.
Thank you. Everybody wants to come along.
You are all welcome to volunteer. The hardest hours are from three to five in the morning, okay? So if you're up, you just let me know, we would love to have you.
I'll, I'll come help at that hour, but I'll also bring my puppies.
I'm in for puppies, I'm always in for puppies.
Nominations.
Yes, we have one, Catherine Fraser, who has been serving as a substitute at the middle school for, as a math teacher. She is certified, and I would recommend her nomination at a starting salary of $44,276.
I would move that.
Second. Questions, comments? All those in favor? Thank you, motion carries. New business.
It's old business, but it's new business. So we have Mrs. Kramer here.
Yay.
To reintroduce the trip that's happening.
Yeah, so in 2023, I was at a school board meeting to talk about this trip that is now loose, which seems really wild that that started almost three years ago. But during spring break, we're going to France and Spain. We'll be starting in Paris for three or four days, and then the Provence region, which is in southern France. And we ended Barcelona, Spain. Ella will be on the trip. I also was able to chaperone Katie Collins' trip this past April to Italy and Greece, also with Ella. We have grand plans to make a T-shirt of pictures of us in up to like ten countries by the time she graduates. So it's well on its way now. I was asked, or it was brought to my attention, to be like reintroduced to the board since there are new members and just kind of with new staff. But if you have any questions or want to go into any more detail about it, but we're well on our way. We have fundraised enough money for the bus to get us to the airport in Boston. The company has just changed, a great change, where we can add the tips money to the costs that people are paying. We're still planning on fundraising to try to reimburse people for that. That was always the intention, to fundraise for that money. But now I don't have to take $140 per person on me throughout Europe and give it away a little bit at a time. It's already taken care of. The person that's working with us will pay the people that need to be paid. And we're actually stealing the same guide that we had in Italy and Greece because we loved her so much. So we are kind of just recycling almost all the same chaperones of some of the same students, and then also a bunch of new students too. But I'm really excited about it. I purposely chose this tour because I studied abroad in college for grad school in Paris. And undergrad, I was in Toulouse, which is near Provence. And then I've been to Barcelona as well, so it's kind of a share, not, it's not, it sounds selfish, but to share the places that I've gone with students. I do think like a highlight of these trips or my career with these trips is, even though I lived in Paris for a year and have studied this language forever, like seeing someone see the Eiffel Tower for the first time is super exciting. And hopefully, nothing bad will happen in the world. I tend to bring issues. Notre Dame caught fire when I was in Paris. And the Pope died when I arrived in Italy. But I was not, I was not, I was not in Paris for the Louvre, the Heist. Although I was in Paris this summer, so I feel like maybe they got the idea. But anyway, I'm super excited. Well, first, in a chaperoning, chaperoned several trips. First time that I'm leading the trip, but I've got a stellar crew. There are six other staff members, or five other staff members that will be there. And my husband will actually be there too, who is almost a bus driver for MSAD 11. So he is currently a bus aide right now, so he's working on that. So we'll all be there. And I'm also very proud of Kira too, both are French students, so. And I mean, you can't get better than that.
Pretty lucky with our student pool.
I call her my soul student. Is there, do you have any questions? It's really just kind of bringing it back to people that may not have known about it. We're well into the planning process now.
Yeah, and I think you were notified in 2023. It's been a while, we want to make sure to remind you, this is happening, it's right around the corner.
We had to go back, check the tape, it was voted. Yep. Yeah, I mean, at the time, it was, it was different principal, different superintendent. Like, it's, it's, it's been around. And we're back, so just happy that it's still going on and that you're still okay with it because we're going. You tell them.
Is this through, is it EF?
Yeah, there are other, there are lots of companies, but that seems to be the one we've kind of stuck with. Katie Collins and I especially, so. And Kasia, who is our Spanish teacher, is going to lead one. Next year, I think she was at the school board meeting last month. Same company, she'll also be on the trip. We got it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be amazing.
I mean, you did a great job.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that is a popular question. Yeah, chaperoning is always a, we have a lot of parents actually coming too that are paid adult travelers. And while they don't have, won't have responsibilities, I feel like they're probably will look out for their child a little bit. Maybe not. But with between the parent travelers and the chaperones, it's almost like a three-to-one, like adult-kid ratio. So we are in really good shape for a large group of around fifty people.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Brittany.
School nights.
Night, Quincy.
Yes. Quincy.
Pat. Sorry.
I'm speaking on two, for two different occasions, so can I keep both of them like that?
Okay with me? Is that okay? So we're looking at, the second bullet, enter A, and then C on your agendas. If everybody's okay with that?
Basketball.
Basketball.
Trip. Yes.
Okay. So last year, oh, first, I'm Brittany Sally Giro. I'm the J and G teacher here at the Gardner High School. I am also our girls' varsity basketball coach. And last year, I took my varsity basketball team. We got invited to play in the Hoop Hall Invitational. It's put on by the Basketball Hall of Fame in Springfield, Mass. And it was just, it was a really amazing experience for these girls to play. It's like a really good cultural experience to play against like different schools from all over the country. There's even some teams from Canada there. We only played two games. And then we get free tickets to the Basketball Hall of Fame, which for kids who live and breathe basketball, is, it's a big deal to be able to go to Springfield and like enjoy the Basketball Hall of Fame and check everything out. So I am asking for board approval to do that again this year. We have raised all of the funds for, for everything. So it would come out of our student activity account, everything would be paid for, rooms. Rooms, and then the goal is to always, like, the hotel includes breakfast, and I will have money for lunch and dinner. This year, we will only stay one night and not two. The way our schedule is, it has been given to us so far, we'll just stay one night, come home. I've already spoke to Nate and like matched up like our high school schedule, which comes first. And so we don't play again until Tuesday. And I guess this is over Martin the 13th day weekend. So we would leave Saturday morning. We would play Saturday afternoon, do a team activity. Last year, we did mall shopping and bowling, that was a big hit. Then we had a dance-off in the hotel. And then we will play again on Sunday and do the Basketball Hall of Fame Sunday morning, play Sunday afternoon, and then drive home. Last year, we stayed another night, but we'll just drive home then. Transportation last year was all parents. So parents are welcome to book their own rooms, and parents drove their own kids. And I would say all of our parents went, we have a great, we have a great support group, so. Are there any other questions?
I would move approval for this trip, that's our policies to.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Yay.
Yeah.
Have a good time.
All right, matter number two. Or C. Hat, hat number three that I wear. I am the advisor for Sources of Strength here at Gardner High School. Sources of Strength, I think, I don't, did the letter get sent to everybody from my?
I hope so. Did you all get?
I'm not good at reading, like, I like to just talk.
Is it in your packets? It would be digital packets, I think.
Yeah, I believe it's in the packet.
I'll give you an overview of what Source of Strength is. So Source of Strength is a, hoped to be a, a, a club. But it kind of, like, it is a peer-led club within our middle school and our high school. So Sam Robison does it at the middle school, and she's also the J and G teacher, which is pretty cool. And then I do it at the high school. But it is, it's peer-run and peer-led, and it's all around like normalizing mental health conversations and allowing. um, mental health conversations and allowing like students to feel more free and positive to have those conversations and it's not all negative. And just trying to give students like hope and, and, and guidance when they see their peers struggling. And finding, um, you know, trusted adults that they can talk to. I, I've been doing this for three years now and I, I, I can say that I have experienced like students feel more open to come to me or a social worker or another teacher and say like, hey, I'm really, like, I'm really concerned for my friends. Like, can you check in on them? And, and I just think that Source of Strength is like, has brought that to our school. It is part of our strategic plan already to help with mental health programming. Um, and I've really enjoyed being, being a part of it. Um, we just did our third training on October twenty-eighth. Um, with NAMI Maine. So NAMI Maine is who guides us, like, and gives us, that kind of helps us with the program and trains, um, the peer leaders and the adult advisors. And then the DFC grant is who funds us. So that's who like funds us if we need materials for a project we're doing. Um, like right now, we're putting on a thankfulness challenge and we're challenging all of our homerooms to do the little hand turkeys of what you're thankful for. And then they use the hand turkeys to make big turkeys on the wall. And like last year, we had turkeys the size of this wall around the school that were all hand turkeys of things that kids were thankful for. And the high schoolers just, they love to kind of pretend they're in kindergarten again and like do the fun things and um, it just brings joy and happiness and, and it really helps kids like see the positive in life when, when things are tough. Um, and so when the, like, those materials come from um, Patricia Buckwell and who like runs the DFC grant, like I give her like a materials list. She gets us everything that we need. Um, and then we distribute it and and support and guide. And so I'm here to formally request that we are a peer-led club, board-approved club, in the middle school and the high school.
I would make that motion.
Who was the second?
It was both Linda and Jenelle, so.
Pick one.
I have a question. So how is it run now if it's already in the little school and high school? What's the difference in making it a formal?
So it's been in the strategic plan to help with like mental health programming, but I guess there was like a miscommunication on being like a, that it also needed to be a board-approved club. I guess that was like the miscommunication part because it become, it comes from like outside funding. And not necess- so there was like, just like, I guess a miscommunication on who exact, like that piece.
I think it was more community run at first.
Yeah.
Now.
We also have a policy to have, uh, um, I forget what we call it, but it's sort of like that interest level.
J and A.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, we have a policy. Um, so that, that uh, clubs kind of start just that, okay, we know they're there and, um, they're just gonna go, and this is sort of recognizing, and I think it opens up things for like transportation to an event or something. You could request that at some point.
Yeah, that if it's like, it's, it's an approved club.
As an approved club, yeah. And we would still have like that approval process, obviously. Um, but the other level of group is sort of just building only kind of thing. So it means, yeah, you've been around for a bit and then like it's coming forward. Is that, yeah, what's happening?
And it's been really great. And it's really great to have it in the middle school and the high school. And we're starting, so there's like eight pieces of Sources of Strength, like helping kids find um, strength, source, their source of strength in like family support or mentors or physical health, uh, mental health, like just all these, all these different parts of the wheel. And so we've matched each part of the wheel to a month. And then we focus on a campaign. So like right now it's generosity for, for the month of um, November. And then like, and, and so each month has, and so the middle school, we're gonna do the same thing now. So that it's being spread, the same messages are being spread across the middle school and the high school. Um, so we did, this was the first time that we did peer leader training with the middle school and the high school together. And it was, it was really great. It was awesome to see the kids like collaborating with each other. Me? I'm, I'm, I'm the like adult advisor, yeah.
Yes, and you will stay that even though, so it's.
Yes, I will stay that. I will stay the adult advisor. Yes. Me and Mrs. McNaughton. She's awesome too. Yeah. And can I share a positive while I'm up here?
Yes, you would.
So, um, Christie McNaughton and I, Christie McNaughton teaches career and tech in life and work, and I teach J and G, which are very similar. Um, and we went to Rotary today and presented like our programs and what we do. And, which was really cool, because sometimes I think people in the community don't, don't know what we do or what we offer, or that like we offer financial courses and like teach kids how to interview and write resumes and all this stuff. And so we, we shared everything that we do and then asked for Rotary's like partnership in helping us connect our students with their community. Um, and, because that was part of our SEL goal this year was to bring connectedness, like to help students feel more connected to their community. And, um, the Rotary was all about it. They were all over it and they were so excited. And had so many great ideas, like when we were, we could have spent all day there talking. And they, we are gonna host, um, our first event with them is gonna be like a career, we're calling it career speed dating. But basically it's like, we're gonna get a bunch of Rotarians around and our students will get, well, we're gonna prep our students with a lot of like, we're gonna gather their bios. And then prep our students with their bios. And then our students are gonna get to go around for like three-minute intervals and like meet that person and like what their career is and how they got there and what their path is and questions they may have. And so we're, yeah, we're really excited about it.
That is so fun. I love that. Yep. So. All those in favor? You got it, girl. Thanks so much, Brittany. That was so great. Alrighty. They're sneaking out the door.
District Ed Tech. Yes, so you've heard a lot about opportunity culture, which is our uh, leadership model and collaborative student support, planning, using the data, making decisions, um, instructional decisions. And we've established leadership positions across the district as part of this opportunity culture model. So part of this might be similar to you, but um, I wanted to make sure that it's, um, on your radar and we're seeking consideration to approve the shift of a district Ed Tech one to specifically slide into an instructional role as part of the opportunity culture model at one of our elementary schools uh, with the potential that we would need to move, um, in another building. And if you recall, we have had conversations, I think historically about when there's instructional responsibility, it really requires that it's a, it's an Ed Tech three in that position. And so we are seeking for permission to uh, use funds that have been established to switch from a district Ed Tech one at Riverview School to a, an Ed Tech three position. And I would welcome any input from Vicky or Angela or if there are any questions.
Feeling, would you have, do you have any questions about it?
So this is because we are short staff of teachers that we wanna have Ed texts doing more instructional work?
By design, the plan was to have a reach associate, which would be this Ed Tech three. And we needed to go through, one, we needed the dust to settle on the school year. Um, to get routines in place. And then we went through a hiring process. And we are ready now to fully implement the plan at Riverview and that's the reason.
So no, it's not, it's not for a teacher shortage. What we've done is we have two teachers that have taken on leadership roles. And part of that is they'll be released from their classroom to take on this leadership role and we need someone to support them with their classroom. So it's actually, it's actually increasing the ability to teach. Because our teachers are taking on these roles to work with other teachers in classrooms. But they need a support person in their classroom, so they have some of that release time. So it's, it's not a shortage. It's actually increasing the ability of our teachers to take on some leadership roles.
Creating flexibility so that students have continuous support and service and teachers have enhanced support and service.
So it was budget neutralized?
No, it's really not. So the additional money for this year is coming out of Title One. In future years, it would need to be an increase to your budget. So as you increase from Ed Tech ones to Ed Tech threes, there would be an additional cost. But this year it is.
This year.
This year, um, Title One is picking up the addition.
So if, if we approve it, is it something that will continue on year to year or will we reassess next year?
We'll certainly reassess at the end of this year because there will be implications, but we are planning to budget for these positions. You know, uh, unfortunately, we won't know exactly, uh, all of the shifts that we need to make, so we'll we'll need to make these decisions in time for the budget to be integrated into the budget. So we'll include these positions.
So we have a motion and a second.
Oh, yeah. So yeah, we need a motion here. So I would move, yeah.
We need a motion.
Approve that shift, um, as, as described.
Okay. And a second? Can we get a second?
A second.
Thank you. All in favor? Brittany, first, thank you. Sources of Strength, Gardner Regional Middle School. Oh, here we go. It's me again.
So we'll have to change Falcon Knight to Tiger.
I know, I know.
We should keep it Falcon Knight. That will be the nod.
I know, we're gonna have to figure it out. So back in nineteen seventy-five, when the Gardner Regional Middle School was built, we started with blue and white as our colors and we were the Falcons. Um, and then over time, as you know, we have often find budget constraints. I know, that's a surprise. Um, and what has happened is we found that there was a way to extend some of the life of some of our uniforms from the high school by using them with our middle school students, right, when they outgrew them or as we recycled. And so the school many years ago went through a color change and we adopted the black of the high school, right? So our kids were wearing uniforms that represented the school. Um, while we've maintained the Falcon identity, I have heard over and over again from kiddos, from families, from staff, why are we just not the Tigers? Because you don't go to a middle school game and hear Falcons, Falcons. You hear Tigers, Tigers. And so I was like, alright, this is the year, we're gonna do the thing. So we sent out a survey to our parents, staff and students. Parents, ninety-eight point six percent, one hundred percent, oh, ninety-eight point six percent in favor of being Tigers. Staff, one hundred percent in the survey were in favor and students were eighty-four point five percent in favor of being the Tigers because they wanna keep the name Falcon Knight flying. Um, and I was like, we will come up with something super creative, I promise. I don't know. Tigers, Dan, we will come up with something that will be equally that. But so we come before you today, basically, myself on behalf of all of our school community and stakeholders to say we would like to officially change our mascot from the Falcons to the Tigers to the Falcon practice in Maine, so we have a more cohesion and our students feel more connected to the Tiger pride. Don't have to go back very far to LAR used to be the Rockets and all the elementary schools had different. LAR had like a rocket and it's.
Oh, yeah, that's why they, we have the thing.
Right, right. So, yeah.
That makes more sense.
So we're just, we're collecting it all into one basket.
So I'll, I'll move to, to make the change, uh, as recommended from, uh, uh, middle school Falcons to middle school uh, JRMS Tigers.
I'll second that. Thirty-seconded, great. All that, all those in favor? Can't imagine there's any more questions or comments about that one. Well, tomorrow morning on the announcements, I'll get to say, good morning Tigers! So that'll be fun.
Be sure to roar.
Oh, and, and I, I promise, I will roar. Not a problem. And I promise you though, I will. No, and no squawking. I will absolutely roar in the announcements. It's not a problem.
The Falcon noise is so screamy.
He needs to do the first few beats of I Have The Tiger.
Oh, see, that's good. Yeah, we, maybe that'll be like a brain break tomorrow between a clashes, play I Have The Tigers, what happens? Dance your way to your next class, you know? Thank you very much. Thank you. This is fun. Miranda Cook, Lisbon.
Alright, I'm representing Nate tonight because he is covering games. So the first is a proposal for our Gardner Indoor Track to form a team co-op with Lisbon and Miranda Cook. So Lisbon and Miranda Cook have both reached out to us to see if we would be interested in taking them on for an indoor track and forming a team co-op. Um, Lisbon had been with Saint Doms, but Saint Doms has closed, so Lisbon has nobody to go with. Um, Miranda Cook hasn't been with anyone and have about eight interested athletes. Lisbon has about ten and we have twenty signed up. Um, this is our second year as a club, so the district is not funding our outdoor track and field program as of yet. Um, the cost for indoor track and field this year is twenty-five hundred dollars, which is paid out of our activities account and/or with the boosters' help. Um, and that's to pay dues for the Kenebec, um, conference. There's no transportation provided, so our parents are great and they transport their students to the meet. Um, and there's also no coaching stipends, so every winter, um, one of our teachers, Jen Boudreaux generously volunteers her time to be the coach. Um, moving forward, Nate expects to request, um, that the board fund indoor track program once it leaves club status. And if the team co-op is approved, then the cost will be split between Gardner, Lisbon and Miranda Cook on an athlete percentage, percentage basis. Um, practices will be held at each school with the exception of Lisbon athletes. They wanna practice with us at the high school. And the athletes will join together at the meets. So we are requesting, um, to join that co-op.
Make a motion to join.
Second. Second. Second, Michelle. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Wait, do you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
In terms of, um, indoor track, where are they running in the high school?
Um, all through the hallways, cafeteria, um, through the gym, so all around our campus. So about the bottom floor of the high school and all the wings, um, I think three laps equals a mile. They're moving. Uh, but yeah, the gym and then.
It's very fun to see.
Yeah, I get to encourage them as they run past my office. Jen does a great job.
Jen does a great job.
Where, uh, where are the meets held?
Um, the meets are held in different facilities depending on where indoor tracks, a lot of like different colonies. And it's actually gonna be more cost-effective for us in the long run when we leave, um, club status, because the cost will be shared.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Alright, so our next one is a proposal for our wrestling team um, to join a team co-op with Haldale. Um, we've currently, we currently have and have had for a while an individual co-op. So the difference is, is that as an individual co-op, um, our students can only participate as individuals and not as a full team. Um, so they can only score as individuals at the meet. And kids from other schools that might not be in our Kenebec conference can't compete within our conference. But as a team co-op, we can compete as a team and all play in the same conference. Um, and it benefits us, uh, because we'll be able to, um, offset the costs with Haldale. Um, and it will allow Haldale wrestlers, um, to score with us as a team. And with the increase in Haldale wrestlers, it makes sense, um, to form a team co-op now instead of an individual, individual co-op because numbers have increased in terms of athlete participation. Haldale will pay towards the co-op based on the present, percentage of wrestlers that we have. We currently have twenty Gardner students signed up for wrestling and anticipate about ten from Haldale. Um, so it's almost an even split, a little bit more on our end, but it'll be more cost-effective in the long run as well. Um, so it's almost an even split, a little bit more on our end, but it'll be more cost effective in the long run as well. And allow all the kids to participate as a team and not individuals.
And I have Haldale, John, I do have to have Gardner John Haldale for the cooperative wrestling team.
Second? Questions? All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you. See, moving updates.
Yes, um, as was the case last year, the Department of Education is offering waivers to school districts who opt to use remote snow days. And so I'm coming to you to consider us, uh, giving us permission to use, um, remote snow days. That would involve the administrative team working through and communicating the plan. Uh, we discussed it as an administrative team earlier today and we would follow a similar plan as was used last year. The parameters around permission to use these, um, waivers is that serve lunch to students, has been the case. If we serve lunch to students on a remote snow day, um, we can consider it a regular school day, an instructional day for students. And so I'm requesting permission to do that.
Yeah, so moved.
Have you served lunch to students on remote? Snow days?
We send it home a day in advance.
So it's anticipated with the forecast and we send home lunches in advance? Okay.
And so that would be a waived day that wouldn't count towards snow days out of school.
Exactly.
It doesn't. Sometimes there's emergencies or, you know, a snowstorm is way worse than we thought it was gonna be. So those days would count towards the absent days.
Yes, yeah, that's a good point, Michelle. There there will be days, maybe days, I don't know, here goes winter. That we'll call a traditional snow day and there will be no expectation for staff being available for office hours and responsive to email, you know, if it's a day that we expect a lot of power outages or just the need for a good old fashioned, we're about to get a lot of inches of snow, snow day. Uh, but we'd like the flexibility to you to do both.
I I move to, um, use remote school days when there's a school closing.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Excellent, thank you. Annual approval of emergency crisis plan.
Yeah, um, we have, each school has revised their emergency plan for the school year, updated staff information, student information, medical alerts. Um, Deputy York and I have reviewed each building plan. We have a hard copy upstairs in a binder. You all have permission, um, to review parts of the plan if you'd like. It stays here in the office, um, and so I bring to you approval of the updated emergency plan. As I said, Deputy York and I reviewed every plan, provided buildings with feedback on those plans. We are actually planning a tabletop exercise with local law enforcement and emergency responders um, in order to be able to really put our plan to the test, walking through some scenarios and making sure that we have a thorough in response to emergency situations. Joanne?
Um, we're on the website, um, can parents see a copy of the emergency plan?
We don't share the emergency plan broadly. We have sensitive, um, student information, we have sensitive safety information regarding each of our buildings and each campus where our building sits, we have, um, evacuation sites. And so we do not share the full plan broadly with families. We expect that building, I expect that building administrators respond to parent parental concerns or questions about the safety plan in each building, but we do not provide access of the full plan.
I would move, we approve this as we've done. Like I I think, I mean, I, Joanne, I think I just have a little reflection, I guess. Joanne, I hear you, like, yeah, we don't have the thing in front of us, which is usually our custom to vote on a thing that is in front of us. It's available upstairs. That might be something that we could or all, you know, should probably commit to going to look at the parts we can. It sounds like, yeah, there's like specific.
Sure, yes, very specific.
That is not, that isn't for the public, uh, might be very, uh, specific student information and some other things that way, but there's we could, we as board members can see most of that.
Yes.
Yeah. So we can just check in with.
Yeah, let me know if you'd like to schedule a time to come and review that. And know that it stays right here on site and so we can schedule for that to happen.
Should we wait to do a vote on this until we've all had the opportunity to be comfortable with what we're looking at? Is that something that we could put off till next month and each of us schedule a time with you?
I think it's a discussion for you all. I think in the past, there's been general approval. I'm not sure how many board members have taken advantage of the opportunity to look through the parts that are available to you for review. So I I would leave that to you to determine.
If everyone is gonna go and make an, I mean, it's really important, um, we have to have the emergency plan. It's not a secret from the board. Anybody on the board who's interested can go and look at it. And it's it's huge. It's.
Michelle, I'd like to say that as a former educator, things that they're not talking about, and I'm sure this is okay, but there are students that you need to have a hand on, you know, that. And so those are the kind of things that I think that they're not sharing with us because it's.
Absolutely. No, I understand that. I'm just sensing some apprehension, so I just wanted to put the question out there.
Are you apprehensive, Joanne, about?
Um, well, I taught for twenty-five years and and we all knew sort of generally what happens with students that say can't use an elevator or needed, you know, these kinds of things. We didn't need to know the names of the people, you know, the people in the building knew who they were and of course, the parents knew who they were. I just wanted to see the entire plan because you know, having had experience with numerous drills over the years, multiple schools, uh, I was, I might have a little bit of insight as other people that have taught, so I I thought we would have seen the parts that we could have seen prior to voting, that's all.
Historically, we've never done that. It's always been a, if you wanna see the plan, you make an appointment and you go to central office and look at the plan. If history is bad, we can certainly redo it. I I, I don't know. Um, I don't.
I'll make an appointment.
Yeah, I think that's, and and we had a board member years ago who would go in and um, look at every, and it's, it's big, it's it's a big plan and, uh, would go in and correct the commas and the periods and those kinds of things and but that was that person's interest as well as as the plan, very intense, and she was very into safety and that was, it was really great. But it's not everybody's passion to do that, so. But it is a thing we have to have.
Just for clarification, is this, this is due every two or three years or is it every year?
Every year, every year. And, you know, at the building level, they're modified sometimes weekly, you know, if there are changes within the building or for students, for staff.
Perfect.
Um, you know, if our phone service were to change, we're going to reflect that in a plan, so they're fluid.
Awesome.
So.
Hold it, I call the question?
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor? And I do encourage everyone, if you wanna know, please make an appointment. Okay, um, let's see, board chair, um, MSMA, fall conference, follow-up.
We just have a CATC cooperative agreement.
Where is that?
It's, oh, tucked right there.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it's a long list. So this is just, um, what I have in front of me requires a board chair signature and my signature. It is the official and formal agreement with CATC. Uh, that allows us to continue sharing, sending our students to share the facility and access to programming at the Capital Area Technical Center. I just wanted to make sure since it's a formal contract that we sign each year that I brought it before you and let you know that I would be asking for a signature.
And you accept the cooperative, CATC cooperative agreement? Second? What was that, second?
Chanel and Michelle.
Hi, Michelle.
All of those in favor? Alright, now.
Matt and Jeff.
Yes.
I'd like to pay, it's under this, I know this is not on the agenda, but I'd like to pay a compliment to the high schools students that helped out at Dave's Donna tonight with the, uh, are you ready for spaghetti fundraiser? And they raised, the place was packed. I went there at five o'clock and you had to fight your way in. And we got served a really good meal and they made a lot of money for Chrisless Place, so they deserve recognition for doing that.
That's wonderful, yay. Thank you. Thank you, high schoolers, and thank you for bringing that up, Jeff. That's great. Uh, we had, um, as a board, we have the opportunity to go to our fall conference every year. The fifty-second annual fall conference was, uh, about two weeks ago. Yeah, probably about two weeks ago now and some of us, uh, went. Um, I would say it's probably the best conference that in all the years that I've gone and there's lots and lots of years that I've gone. It was great. Um, Joe San Filippo, who is, has a huge career um, as an educator and a superintendent and a doctor and OBGYN, he's got all these wonderful initials after his name. Um, he's, but he was our keynote speaker and he was just wonderful, talking about, um, joy, talking about, um, finding the good. Finding the good in your school. And he was such a great role model for his school and has such good energy, great stories, has written several books. I've brought the books in here before and offered them for folks to to read and I have them if anyone would like to read any of his material. Um, so it was just really a good and uplifting, um, experience. We came away with, we spent a lot of time with Ella and and Kara. And, uh, a lot of time with how do we, how can we as a board to, um, express that? You know, show show the community that we really are working on that. And one of the ideas that we came up with, um, we have to, we have to fine tune them. Um, one of them was, um, having students come once every month and to sort of give a, give a break to our administrators whom we love having. But it's a lot of work for you to create and wouldn't it be great if we had students come in? Um, and we can decide, we haven't decided how many buildings, one building, two buildings, every building, to come in with something, something positive that's happened in your building this month and have the student present and have their parents come with them because we want all levels to be, to be recognized and um, and and Dr. Filippo, Sam Filippo, it's a hard word to say. Uh, he was, he's just so good at pulling out those positive stories and and reminding us that we are the accumulation of our stories. We are not one event, um, after another. We are, all of us and our board and our district is is an accumulation of our stories together as a community. And what a great idea that, um, that could be for us to fine tune that and bring it into the, into our board meetings. Another idea we came away with was to, um, every student, um, if if given permission by their, written permission by their parents, signs a photo release at the beginning of school every year so that your student can have photographs taken of them or not. But the ones that have photographs taken, that we could put candid photos of our students in the boardroom so that we remember that they're, where our focus lies and that it's with our students. And then gift those photos to them upon graduation. Here, this is you in second grade and here you are now, seventeen years old. And so we begun talking about that and we talked with our student board reps about that and we just felt like that was a great idea. So more to come. And that's my experience. Secondly, um, we have the performance of It's A Wonderful Life happening right now, right now in River City. And it's our, had, has been our pattern to go to a play, um, take a field trip as a board and, um, condense our meetings so that we could do that. It didn't happen this time. There were too many things coming together at the same time. Um, but I would love to encourage you all to, um, go and see It's A Wonderful Life because it is a wonderful life and we are very fortunate to live here in this, in this community. Um, so that's happening right now through the weekend and tickets are available. It can be purchased online or at the door. That's my report.
Nice.
Ready?
Oh, ready for you.
Yeah, um, I actually do not have a full staff vacancy report, but what we do have here is Sarah and we have the most vacancies in special education. Isn't absolutely putting you on the spot to?
I can probably summarize most of them. Andrea and I met today to review them. I'm sure that we're still within our vegetarian requirements as well as position requirements. Um, we have four open ed tech one positions funded through local entitlement. We have one ed tech three position for a general budget. And a good old ed tech three position, that's a one-year position. We are pivoting on open teaching position to see if we can find a candidate for that. Those are the tech positions. Teaching positions, we need a teacher in the student department. Um, we need a, two teachers at the high school, one in literacy and one in math. And we pivoted an inclusion specialist, that's a person that does paperwork and IP meetings and communications between schools and families um, to a teaching position and Christine Ferrera has picked up a big chunk of that paperwork as, as have myself and another person. Um, so that inclusion specialist is teaching at River View and doing a phenomenal job, but we need to fill something there. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Sarah. Yeah. Uh, update on the cell phone policy. So when you all approved the cell phone policy, um, you wanted to hear how it was going earlier, sooner than later, before too much time passed. And so I have some feedback from our administrators. For the most part, they are saying that it's business as usual in buildings and that the new policy has not initiated a big, um, a big change. At the high school, they're saying it hasn't really changed our practices. Um, they're not really referencing the language, the color zones, really. They're, um, just addressing cell phones and use not in the classroom but in hallways and at lunch. And it's pretty much business as usual at the high school. At the middle school, they really had a response from families feeling like families wanted students to have access to those phones in the event that they needed to get in touch with them quickly. And so that has been, um, some of the experience at the middle school. As far as students are concerned, there's some sneakiness to access the phones. Um, there is a decrease in texting during the school day, um, you know, direct access. So a student, instead of going to the office to make a call about not feeling well, might just send a text message to the parent, say I'm not feeling well. Um, and there has been an increase in lock rentals to secure cell phones at the middle school. And, um, there wasn't a change to report at the elementary level. And, uh, except watches are a harder part of the whole policy. So the smartwatches and watches that can do some of the things are tricky. So at this point, I mean, I, I think we are in good shape as far as the policy addressing what it was designed to address. I would welcome it up. I'm looking at administrators looking so tired right now. If there's anything that anyone wants to add, um, I think that pretty well covers, covers it.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, do little people have watches?
Yes.
Some of them do, yeah. We've asked a couple of students to, um, we've held on to their watches for the day and families have had. we've held on to their watches for the day and families have had a very nice response about it. Just not, um, having full awareness that they knew cell phone policy, but they weren't thinking watch. So just in, that's been maybe three families so far.
And I think that is kind of not really a stretch, but you don't necessarily think about watches when you are thinking about a cell phone, you know, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a C D S F A B update for you. If you recall, there is a state law that requires uh, public school systems districts to take on the responsibility of providing a free and appropriate public education to all three-year-olds and four-year-olds by July of 2028. There are many school districts across the state that have jumped into cohorts. So there is a cohort one across the state of Maine, a cohort two, and cohort three is just starting to come together now. We have a district team who has met with C, um, the Department of Education to talk about the potential to join cohort three. And that would mean that any four-year-old currently receiving special education services through C D S would be our responsibility. So whether a four-year-old, this would be next school year, whether a four-year-old attends our pre-K program or not, if they qualify for services like speech services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, classroom support, uh, or support in a childcare setting, we're, we would be responsible for providing that as a special education department and as a school system. We currently, what this looks like is that we have four-year-olds who come to school here for pre-K and they receive their services from C D S. So a C D S provider comes to pre-K for most and provides speech services, for example. Um, but we are looking to take a phased approach. And again, we haven't committed as a school district and that's really an update for you all as the board. Uh, but I wanted you to know that we have had two individual M S A D 11 conversations with the Department of Education. We have another one coming up. Uh, the folks who sit at those meeting tables so far have been myself, Sarah as the Director of Special Services. Mrs. Levine sits, has, uh, been at the table because all of our pre-K classes are currently at L E R. Um, for this next meeting, we'll talk about the financials. We'll talk a bit about transportation. It's a more in-depth look at what this would look like. And that, um, Andrea will be part of that conversation, of course. This is a fully funded, um, tied to statute mandate. And districts get the choice about how they opt into this. And so what we are thinking at this point is that starting with taking on the responsibility for four-year-olds next year feels like a, a big bite. And the following year, we would take on the responsibility for the three-year-olds, the three-year-old services. In the meantime, you know, we have the cohort one and cohort two and we can take advantage of what they've learned through their process and, uh, develop our own plan. It's fully funded. Again, we'll learn more about that in a coming meeting. I'm gonna check my notes to make sure I'm including everything.
And we've known this was coming.
Yes, we absolutely have.
Couple of years. Yes, Jeff.
When you say fully funded, do you mean we're fully funding it or the state?
The state is fully funding this. So that would include classroom setup, classroom equipment, furniture, materials, uh, staffing.
And that was an unknown several years ago when it started. It was kind of like not, not how you knew it or if you knew it, it was when you do it. And the funding, I don't believe had been worked out quite then.
Yeah, I think you're right.
It's better now.
Just to, so we're responsible for the four-year-olds. Um, are, so we're gonna be just hoping that these four-year-olds in Gardner are identified by what their pediatrician or their daycare or their parents or we're just gonna hope that they get, we, we're intervening and getting them before they come to us. Like, how are we gonna know that we're getting all the four-year-olds in Gardner if there's a four-year-old that's not in our program?
Well, we're partnering with C D S and the Department of Education now. And so we actually have a spreadsheet of identi, of currently identified students. And it is possible that we will initiate a referral, an internal referral process for a student that has uh, a need and is unidentified, you know? And, and we know what that process looks like because we initiate that for five-year-olds, you know, um, or students who come to us in pre-K, we would initiate that referral, but we initiate it through C D S. And we would just do that through, um, school staff.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, Michelle.
Feel free to chime in.
I have a question about. So this is the frame of public education. What provision is there for parents who choose a private preschool? Is the state going to fund every student no matter where they're going? Or is it specifically to channel students into the public school pre-K?
We are going to be responsible for providing the service for any student in our dis, in our geographical district. So in our catchment area. If they live here, they're at, those students are our responsibility. So we have to think through whether we want to, um, send a provider into a private daycare, schedule all of those four-year-olds to come into school for their service. It's probably going to be a hybrid model of, of what we're offering because we have to partner with families, you know? And transportation might be a barrier. And, and I believe based on what I'm learning over time is that this looks a number of different ways in a, in different communities around the state. So a great question and, um, something that we'll have to explore once we know the circumstances for each student.
More info coming.
Yeah.
More information.
That's for sure.
Okay.
Be prepared.
That'll be what we're doing.
To be determined. So, and honestly, part of the challenge, you know, for a student who currently gets identified for services and that service comes from C D S is not atypical for a student to arrive in pre-K or to attend pre-K and to not get that service that they qualify for because there's not a service provider to provide it. So we do expect staffing to be the challenge that it's been over the last few years.
Which I guess I thought was why it wasn't here yet, because they hadn't figured out how we were gonna do that yet, but now here we are.
So definitely much more information coming. Um, I will keep you updated as we go. Um, I just wanted you to know probationary teacher observations happen. I actually get into classrooms and observe all teachers in their first probationary year. Uh, Mrs. Arnold and I observed the first teacher, the first probationary teacher of the year to be observed, uh, last week. And so I just wanted that, uh, for general awareness, for you to know that that is already happening. Um, and I think it's a great practice that was established by Pat Hopkins. And, uh, that's something that I think is really, really important. That allows, uh, me to get into buildings, for me to observe practices in all buildings, for us to stay calibrated and for building principals who sit side by side with me during those observations to discuss what we, what we see and what feedback we prioritize to provide to the staff members uh, or to the teachers, I should say. And then the only other thing I wanted to just to make sure that you're aware of is that um, all of our school nutrition programs, breakfast, lunch are unaffected by anything, uh, SNAP related. We continue to provide the free lunches, free, um, lunches to all students.
Other question?
Yes.
Unrelated, it's another topic, but, um, at the September meeting, we talked about the possibility of touring the schools. And I believe that at the October meeting, there was a mention of a survey being sent out. Um, and I have not seen that, so I was just wondering the status of that.
Haven't gotten to it yet.
Okay.
It will be coming.
Okay.
More information to come.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Yes. Okay.
I think we are, yeah. Um, it's time for executive session, so we're gonna have to bid you all adieu. And thank you so much for coming and making this part of your night. It was date night. I hope it was great. I really missed one game.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Five minutes.